Good evening and welcome. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Rockport City Council. Today is Tuesday, May the 10th. The time is 6:30 PM. The meeting will be held in person at the training room of the Rockport Service Center, 2751 State Highway 35 bypass, Rockport, Texas. Members of the public can view the service meeting via live stream on YouTube. Public participation is valued and citizens wishing to express their views on any topic or agenda item can electronically submit a citizen participation form in order to register to speak by going to the Rockport website. And they can also scan a QR code on the agenda, or if attending the meeting in person, register before the meeting begins. Using the same form, citizens can also provide written comments to the city secretary by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. The comments will be read and summarized in the minutes of the meeting. I take a roll call for attendance. Ward one.
Here.
Ward two.
Here.
Ward three.
Here.
Ward four.
Here.
Mayor here. I note the presence of the quorum and call the meeting to order. Please rise and join Mayor Pro Tim Villa as he leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome again, everyone. I'd also like to take a point of personal privilege and recognize Mayor Kelly Cole that's in attendance with us tonight, one of our elected officials. I don't see anyone else, and we also have Mr. Tim Jero, our mayor-elect, in attendance. So, welcome to all and thank you for coming.
And I like Danielle.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Smith, she was hiding behind you. And Danielle Hale, our council member-elect, ward two. Thank you for coming. I think you all have been regulars at the meetings for the last several months. Moving on to agenda, and also, wait up before I go further, all of the first responders that are here tonight, showing up en masse. Do I have to worry if my house catches fire? Okay, I'm counting on you. Moving on to agenda item number three, proclamation, National Kids to Park State. I don't know if we had anyone here from just Rick? Just you? You're enough, one riot, one ranger, right? Oh, yeah, there are several of them out there, I see them. Someone on P&amp;Z right here, too. Whereas, May 21st, 2022, is the 12 Kids to Park State, organized and launched by National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas, Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages their families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas, we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypocholesterolemia. And whereas, Kids to Park State will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. And whereas, Kids to Park Day will recognize the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. Now, therefore, I, Patrick R. Rios, Mayor of the City of Rockport, do hereby proclaim May 21st, 2022, as Kids to Park State in the City of Rockport, Texas. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Rockport, Texas, to be affixed this 10th day of May 2022. And I will present this to you, Mr. Martin. At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience from persons who have signed the speaker's card located on the table in the back of the training room of the service center and delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins, or written comments received by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting on any subject matter that is not on the agenda, will be read and summarized in the minutes of the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council and who have registered using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace as prohibited by law shall be caused for the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. And I have some items, but they're on agenda items, no cards received. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Council, does anyone wish to remove an item or items from the consent agenda?
No.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it reads.
Second.
A motion from Ms. Hatman, a second from Ms. Jackson. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you. Item number eight, we're going to call to order the Rockport Planning and Zoning Commission.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. The time is 6:37 and planning and zoning is in session. Item number nine, conduct a joint public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider a request for a conditional use permit for 14 additional RV spaces and to bring the existing RV park into zoning compliance, located at 217 South Fulton Beach Road, Beacon RV Park, also known as Fulton Bayview Edition, Block F, lots 1, 2, and 3, and waterfront east of 1, 2, and 3, and undivided interest in waterfront east of Fulton Avenue and Beacon RV Park and Marina Subdivision. Lots 1R, 2R, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, currently zoned B1, general business district. And I do have two forms on item number nine. They're non-speakers and they wish these comments to be read into the minutes of the meeting. First one is from Sid Fly, 304 South Third Street, Rockport, Texas. He's speaking in opposition. "We are very concerned about drainage, trash, their dumpsters overflow, and neighbors pick up the wind-blown trash. Our lot has been used as a dumping ground by their tenants over the years, and we've had to remain vigilant in keeping it clean. After Hurricane Harvey, the RV park owner made a verbal commitment to help rebuild a fence that is shared by property owners on both sides. After the construction was completed, that verbal comment was disregarded, and as a consequence, there's been a loss of trust regarding anything the RV owner-manager says. One of the most desirable, one of the most visible remaining water properties and a potential boost to the community's aesthetic beauty would become a visual distraction from the charm of the area. This would negatively affect the value of our property as well as that of the other surrounding properties. We stand in firm opposition to any zoning changes that allow additional trailers and RVs in the area." The second item is from Marcela Fly, 304 South Third Street, Rockport, Texas. She is in opposition. "I am opposed to allowing the additional 14 RV spaces to Beacon RV Park. The increase in noise, traffic, and light would not be a positive addition for Rockport. The potential for traffic issues on the two-lane roads adjacent to the RV park would go up. The Fulton Mansions beauty to the side of Beacon RV Park would be marred by the nearness of an even larger condensed temporary population. I feel that allowing more RVs at this bayfront location would be a step in the wrong direction from all the prior work in the City of Rockport. All work the City of Rockport has put into creating a new comprehensive plan for the city. The desire for low-density growth that maintains the local charm would be disregarded if this I have a card from a Matthew Danzer that may or may not wish to speak.
My biggest concern has been addressed in those, and it's basically the drainage.
Okay, did you want to speak now or after we discuss the item? Okay, thank you. Ms. Dietrich.
There's also one more that would hail to us from his cousin, Thomas Fahey, at 305 Timothy. And Ms. Fahey is in opposition and states the requested change would bring additional non-residents to our small neighborhood. So, this is the Beacon RV Park. I'm not sure if Ms. Grego is here. Oh, you're here? Oh, okay. You can speak. And it's the Beacon RV Park, and she's asking for a cup to bring it into compliance because it was there when they were annexed, so there is no cup, and add 14 spaces in the vacant part there on the corner, as part of the park. I did point out that she is, she is not four acres, she's three and a half, but like I said, she was, that was existing when she, they were annexed.
Okay. And this, there'll be a planning and zoning meeting in this building on Monday at 5:30?
Yes.
If anyone else wishes to comment on this right now during this public hearing, they're welcome to.
The owner, Ms. Grego, is here. She would like to speak.
Okay.
Bertha Grego, Beacon RV Park. We would like to add the additional spaces. We feel like we keep that area clean. My park is pretty much kept clean unless I have issues with one more parts and stuff. Trash and stuff that's been addressed, if any. Fencing has been done. The neighbors were kind of not helpful in building the fence and stuff, they always had issues. But I feel that building the RV sites on this space of land would not add any additional noise or anything. You know, I have a quiet time, 10:00 PM, and we enforce it. The other addition would be to put a restaurant or a motel in this, or cottages in their place. Any questions?
No.
Drainage, of course drainage and all that would be addressed. After Hurricane Harvey, I paid an engineer for my drainage and stuff in my park. And then the houses that came and built after Harvey, or rebuilt after Harvey, they built up their land and stuff, and they filled in the low areas, and now drainage is an issue.
Okay.
But that was not created by Beacon. It was created by everyone in the area.
Any other comments from the public on this? Again, there'll be the meeting, the P&amp;Z will hear this on Monday at 5:30 in this room.
And FYI, the engineer has engineered drainage and stuff, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Danzer, did you want to speak?
Yes, sir. If you state your name and address for the record, please. Matthew Danzer, 112 Fulton Avenue. I am the closest homeowner to where the additional spots will be. We've been there for, coming up on two years, and, you know, unfortunately, we have a southeast bend that's right next to the dumpster, and in fact, we do pick up trash regularly. That's not the only problem with it blowing towards us. The other problem is that it also goes into the ditch, which then drains out to the bay, right? And that's a huge problem for everybody. Now, as far as the drainage goes, if we get just a little bit of rain, maybe like two inches, you know, we have a standing water in our yards. Sure, there's a few people that may have filled in their land. However, it's the design of the current layout that is ultimately the problem. It has to make 290-degree turns before it actually ends up out into the bay. So that's going to create some restrictions there. There's also maybe some silt or something as well under the street culverts. That's, I think that's all I got.
Okay.
So biggest issue is, you know, the, there's only one drainage ditch, and unfortunately, we kind of share it, I guess, per se, because the water, again, just pushes back towards our property.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And again, if you'd like to attend the meeting Monday for planning and zoning, you can bring up any more issues. Okay, moving on to agenda item 10. Conduct a joint public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider a request for a conditional use permit for 78 additional RV spaces and to bring the existing RV park into zoning compliance, located at 1222 Highway 35 South, Ancient Oaks RV Park, also known as S1950 Forest Oaks, Block 1, Lots 1 and 2, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, currently zoned B1, general business district. Ms. Dietrich.
Good evening. This is the Ancient Oaks RV Park on Business 35. They are asking for a cup to bring the current park into compliance and to add the 78 spaces in two phases, that that would complete that park. That's vacant lot on the northeast side of the park, yes. We did get two letters of opposition, one from Ms. Candace Sargent and Kim Johnson at 1215 Highway 35 South. They are in opposition with no additional comments. And Rockport Emerald Properties LLC, which is Tommy Nguyen and, I don't know, Taos, Taos. They are in opposition, and their comments are, "This change will lead to more people, traffic safety issue, and noise to the neighborhood, thus decreasing the value of the area." And Jamise is here for comments, for her presentation.
Okay.
I will leave this here.
If you need me, if not.
There's your.
Well, this is a public hearing, you're welcome to speak if you'd like.
Oh, okay. I'm Jamise Fisher. I work for Mr. Don Buttram, who is the, became the owner of Ancient Oaks in December of this, of 2020. Obviously, this is a beautiful kind of diamond-in-the-ruth property. It's got some gorgeous trees, but it needs some TLC. We are currently have moved with money four mobile homes out of the park because it's been kind of a mixed bag of a lot of different things going on. You know, we don't want to make any changes to zero trees, but we want to add with your new guidelines and specifications on the new RV things, sizes, green space, what have you, we want to add Phase 1, which is 50 spaces, and Phase 2, which is 30. Phase 2, we would still, by the map of where it is, would have to relocate three mobile homes. And that's, that's a delicate, that has to be done delicately. We just don't want to, anyway, I mean, as far as, you know, there's some drainage issues there, we've hired Tommy Fox to address any issues as far as, because I think there are some existing drainage issues with that area. So we also, over time, plan to update existing spaces to the new regulations because they're just on top of each other. So, anyway, anything else? Any questions?
No. Again, there'll be a meeting this Monday, 5:30 in this room.
Okay. We'll be here.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak?
If I know any questions.
Okay.
Something extra, sorry.
Oh. The time is 6:49, and Planning and Zoning Commission is adjourned. Moving on to the regular agenda, item number 12, hear and deliberate on presentation of Rockport Harvey Housing LLC Pearl Point Annual Report.
My name is Markour. I am one of the co-managers and developers of Pearl Point, overall master plan, apartment development, and some other items in there. We're supposed to deliberate, or we're supposed to give you our annual report for 2021, which we have delivered to y'all. So in accordance with our agreement, there are several things that we have to tell you about to make sure that we cleared all the hurdles, all right? So, February 13th, 2019, we entered into an agreement between the City of Rockport and Rockport Harvey Housing to enter to a 381 economic development agreement on our property, the whole total 28 acres, which is Phase 1 and Phase 2. Pursuant to the agreement, it was to be constructed in two phases, Phase 1 and 2. The company annual report to the city dated February 2 of 2021 confirmed that Phase 1 was completed in February of 2021. In May 20 of 2021, owner transferred Lot 2 to a new entity, Pearl Point 2 LLC, in preparation for the construction of Phase 2. This was followed by the city's consent to the assignment of the owner's rights and obligations under the agreements as it relates to Phase 2 to the new entity. So, each one of them stands on their own as far as the Chapter 381 agreement. So, in the agreement, it requires the owner's annual report to provide the following: compliance with the agreements, that we did do everything that we agreed to do, that we maintain a viable presence in the area. Well, obviously, you can see that we have done that. We have a great relationship with Graystar Real Estate Partners, who is our management company. They manage 400,000 units, really worldwide. Great company, and they do a great job. Sales tax sourcing, y'all didn't ask us for any sales tax sourcing, but I will tell you that through all the phases that we have worked on, we have done the maximum that we can to spend money locally. And that's part of our agreement, that we do that. Capital investment that we've made so far for both phases is $42,959.78 so far, and we certify that in Phase 1, we did spend $30,807.345, which is significantly exceeding our $20 million that we were required to do under the agreement. Phase 2, to date, we are, at the date of this, when we sent this in probably three weeks ago, we were at $12,152,133, which is 32% of where we are in our investment in the second phase, which is 70 units more than the first phase. So, we will far exceed our $20 million requirement that we have to do. Quarterly reports, you can see that we have, you know, shown you the expenses that we've paid out in this report. Phase 2 is the same situation. We did buy locally, like I just referred to, and on this actual report, we, I'm looking here, and it says the total in Phase 1 says $42,959. I think we may have changed this already to the $30,807.
We did.
And you all have that, okay? So, we anticipate completion of Phase 2 by...
November?
December. December. December, we should have Phase 2 completed, and we will be starting leasing the first two buildings in early July. The clubhouse on Phase 2 will open. Construction timeline there again. The agreement requires the owner commence construction within 90 days after the effective date, which was February 13th of 2019, and that we've received the final certificate of occupancy within 30 months, which we did by October 13th of 2021. And then we were to commence the second phase of construction by May 7th of 2019. And we did all that. Let's see. We talked about the operation of the project. We have paid all our ad valorem taxes. We've been in compliance with all the city ordinances. It's a requirement of this Chapter 381 agreement. We have had local employees. All five of our staff members are local residents here and have been through Phase 1 and...
Phase 2.
Our local coordinator is Russell Cole, and he's been acting as that throughout the beginning of this whole project, and his name is on both of our signs at both entrances, so everybody who wants to talk to him is welcome to call him. Let's see, total taxes paid and rebates received. So, between acquiring the property in 2018 and today, Pearl Point has paid $292,838 in property taxes, and without Pearl Point, the same property would have paid approximately The amount of the property taxes paid, Pearl Point has received 30% from city and county, which is $86,970, but the government entities have received $205,867 from the project. So...
Russell, I know you wanted to talk a little bit more.
Yes, I've been with the owner since, I think, July of 2018, when I first started with them, and I started with, from the beginning of design of Phase 1 to where we are today. And first, I would like to thank the council and all your city employees for working with us. It is, it, there's been some challenges, but everything's been worked out. It's just been a... It's, it's just been a, you know, we've, we've had a couple bumps in the road, but, you know, I'd make a phone call to Mr. Donahoe, and, and we'd get it worked out, or I, you know, so it's been, it's been a, a very good working relationship. And I think this is a project that not only the city of Rockport should be proud of, but Aransas County, because I've had the pleasure of serving on the Drainage Committee for, I think I'm on my twelfth year. And I know how important drainage, the best management practices, and all that is, and this project exceeds all those expectations. You know, the whole project, the whole piece of property on the point is roughly thirty-four acres. Well, that whole thirty-four acres, including the checkout store, the self-storage, and both department units drain in a two-acre pond. There's nothing that drains off-site with a normal rain. Now, if we get thirty inches, I can, I cannot control that. But it, it's been a, a very good project, and I think it's something that the, the city should be proud of also. And I know we are, the owners, and as a project manager. And I'd just like to go over a couple of things because the last... Can't say what I want to say, but there's been a, some comments made about impact fees, permit fees, and, you know, we're not paying our fair share, so I would just like to share that, you know, in phase one, with permit fees, impact fees, and TAP fees, we paid over two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to the city. Now, phase two is going to be a little more because we're a little bigger. So far in phase two, we've paid over three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars to the city for the permit fees, plan review, impact fees, and TAP fees, and we're not through. So that's a total of five hundred and fourteen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars that if this project wouldn't have moved forward, the city would not have had. So again, thank you all for, for working with us. It's been fun. It's still fun. I don't know where we're going from here, but we're going to do something else, so thank you all.
Thank you. Any questions, Council?
Any questions?
For Mark or Russell? Okay. Appreciate it. It just proves you can't believe everything you see, you read on Facebook. It's a beautiful project. It, it looks really nice out there. Thank you. Item thirteen. Deliberate and act on second and final reading of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit for addition of four recreational vehicle sites located at 2328 Chaparral Street, also known as Chaparral South Lots One, one point zero one acres, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, subject to compliance with conditions stated within this ordinance, as well as those stipulated in the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Any change in form or substance? Okay. Counsel?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you. Item fourteen. Deliberate and act on a resolution declaring certain city property surplus and authorizing the disposition and donation of said property to further a public purpose and establishing an effective date. I think Chief's going to handle this one. It will be in good hands, is what you mean.
Mayor, council. As you recall, I believe it was actually the last fiscal year, at the end of it, we took delivery of the new Rockport Police Boat, and it was to replace the nineteen-year-old boat that we, that we had, and our intention was to auction that boat off. One of the challenges that we've, that we have faced is taking the, well, originally, we were under the impression that the fire pump that was mounted on the old boat was inoperable and, and was in so, such need of repair that we would just need to replace that, and pricing for that would have been in the tens of thousands of dollars, so that was a challenge. But turns out, speaking with our first responder partners, that pump is actually in good working order. It just had not been adequately maintained, tested, things like that over the years. It is actually in great working order, so the next challenge was, how do we take that, that pump and where to put it on the new police boat? The bow of that boat, you guys have, some of you have been on it. It doesn't lend itself as well as the old boat. All that, neither here nor there. The larger challenge is having police officers operate that fire pump. And when I first saw it, it was intimidating. It's a very, very large pump, and, and then how to, I don't know where to put, Councilman Brundt, I don't know where to put water on the fire. I understand it's actually the steam that suffocates it, not the water that puts it out. I think, I think. I don't know, I don't know the science.
Great job, you're a cop. You did a great job explaining.
So, okay. So in a conversation, actually, with Chief Stubbs, we began to talk about, well, what is the best service we can provide for not just Rockport citizens, but actually countywide throughout our, our whole jurisdiction here? And really, the best thing is to have firefighters fighting fire, you know, really. And the, while the old police boat, we have reached the end of life for the law enforcement service that it could provide for us, and we needed the new boat we have, it still has useful life for other things in public safety, specifically firefighting, to get it out into the canals. It is a, a smaller boat. It'll do great for that, and that fire pump already has mounts on that old boat. So what we've come up with is a plan to, and you're familiar with the Aransas County Emergency Corporation, I think some of you are, it's a consortium of our three fire departments, Rockport, Fulton, and Lamar, and they work very well together. You've seen when we get a call for a fire, all three of them show up. It may be two Rockport Fire Trucks, a Lamar Fire Truck, or two Fulton Fire Trucks, whatever the mix may be, but they all show up, and they show up in a, in a very organized manner. And so rolling the old police boat into their fleet with that fire pump mounted on it, most importantly, with firefighters on that boat already, so we don't have to try to pick them up and engage in more coordination, that is the best thing that we've come up with collectively, and I think that's going to work really well, is to basically surplus out the old police boat, donate it to the Aransas County Emergency Corporation, and let them take control of that, and they'll do a better job, much better than what I'm going to do trying to figure out where to put that fire, where, where to put that water pump. So with that, if Chief Stubbs has anything to add?
Chief Stevens has pretty well covered everything, but I do think this would work out good for the county and the city as a whole. It would be, and like we've talked, it'll be available for any emergency service. We, we will keep it maintained. The fire pump on it will always be ready to go, so hopefully, without any big mechanical issues, this thing's going to always be ready to respond anywhere in the county. So, yeah, I think it'll work out good for both departments. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions for these folks?
Chief Stubbs, where are we going to house it?
Right now, the plan is Holiday Beach Fire Department. We can, the, the goal of mine is to have one department maintain it. That way, no one's pointing the fingers at each other if something's wrong. And I don't care which department does it. I don't mind taking it on. You know, I'm pretty boat savvy. I got some other guys that are very familiar with boats, very familiar with water, but the goal is also to have operators from all three departments always available to operate this thing. So no matter where it is, what the fire is, we hopefully have people ready to go. It would also be available for search and rescue if that comes along for other things out in the water. But it's, it would be a joint effort between the three departments. Even though it's a Holiday Beach Fire Department, it's available for all three fire departments countywide, and also even Chief Stevens has said, you know, at a big fire, he would even help us out if it came to sending police officers to get it and at least bring it to us, you know, if something really big is going on. So I see it as a joint effort between all emergency services.
Do we have funding to, I guess, re-stripe it? Any painting or anything could be done?
You know, I haven't even gone there yet. First, I'd like to get it and just go through it mechanically, make sure everything is good on the boat, trailer's good and all that, and then we can talk about what color it's going to be, since you have three fire departments that each have different colors.
It's only two sides of a coin, so I don't know.
So...
Blue, green, red, blue, green, red, red, green, blue.
It might be purple to, you know, get to an agreement on it. I don't know.
Take all the colors and mix them and see what you get.
Yeah, so...
Tie-dyed fire boat.
Yeah. Thank you, Chief.
All right. Any other questions?
Anything else?
I think motion to approve item, agenda item number fourteen that's presented.
Sorry.
We have a motion from Mayor Protembia and a tie from Ms. Jackson and... Ms. Hatman?
I'll give it to Jack.
Oh.
Oh, you're so nice. Hi.
I'm not going to get in the middle of this.
I appreciate it.
Word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you. Item fifteen. Reports from council. Should we make Ms. Jackson go last, or?
No, I'm going first.
Go first, okay.
All right. Let's see. This coming weekend was, is second city, or second Saturday down in the district, we'll have the makers market, the farmers market, and the Main Street Market up and running. And if you really want a burger, VFW will be doing a burger at Austin in Main Street. Come get one. They're Angus Burgers. They're really good. We've also got, coming up on the 21st, is going to be, Archad will be starting their Passport to the Past, and that's Fulton Museum, the Fulton Mansion, Maritime Museum, Historic History Center, and the soft opening of the Rockport Depot. So if you get a chance, go on down there, and also on that day, we'll be having a Vets and Pets event at Doggone Brewery, so come by there and get a burger on the 21st. Other than that, Rockport's doing good right now. Word one's doing really good right now because it isn't raining, so we don't have to worry about drainage. And other than that, I'm going to a, the second half of my TML Leadership Academy directly after this meeting, and that'll be fun. So that's all I got.
Mr. Rio?
We attended TML this past Friday. So there was a few that said today that Ms. Jackson, myself, and the mayor, and some of the department heads as well, thank you for coming. This is actually, this is my last meeting, like, active meeting, so it's been an enjoyment the past ten years. I never thought I would have been on here for ten years, so I appreciate it.
A few things. I'd like to thank Councilmember, or Mayor Protembia and Mayor Rio for their service to the community. This is their last official meeting, I guess. Short timing, yes, next meeting.
Don't sell us short. We have to show up for the next one.
You gotta show up for the next one. But I would graciously thank you for y'all's service to the community and the city, and all the headaches and accolades and all the money y'all got for doing it. The paychecks aren't great, aren't they?
I missed that.
But sent it to the wrong address.
Yeah.
Secondly, so thank you all. Secondly, I'd like to thank Chief Stevens and Captains Garcia and Anderson. Yesterday, we had a little meet and greet with Rockport PD in Old Rockport to discuss some of the recent issues we've been having in the area, and it was well-attended for the neighborhood, and a lot of good information was given to the residents, and I've had nothing but great comments from, feedback from after last night. So thanks to Rockport PD, the chief, and captains for putting all that together and making that happen. It's good to have some community engagement, and maybe we can do some more of that with our other neighborhoods. So, yeah, as we all know, Chief Stevens likes to get up and talk in front of people, so he has no problems. The councilmembers, y'all would like to bug him on, you know, in the evening. He's fine. Anyway, that's all I have for word three. Thank you all.
I would like to second Mr. Brundt's comments on JD and, and the mayor here. Thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate it. It's been a joy working with you guys the last two years, and I know you guys will be greatly missed on the council. Also, I would just like to, on word four, we're still working on the drainage. We do have a pipe trying to come in, so just keep an eye on that. It's still in the design phase, but we are moving along, and as soon as that gets in, or if we can get it in, that will be a very big part in helping with the flooding and the drainage in our area, so we are just continually working on that. Besides that, I don't have a lot of fun things like Katie's word does, so that's about it for tonight.
Thank you. Been a busy cup last week, week and a half. Last week, I attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Seamis Townhomes on 3036. Now, they've been open for a while. They're ninety-seven percent occupied. Because of COVID, they were never able to do a ribbon-cutting. We actually got to tour one of the units, and they really did a great job in putting those back on. And ninety-seven percent occupied, waiting list for the two open apartments, and it's affordable housing, so it's, it's a good, good addition to the community. We also, last week, attended the, the Hooks Game with Aransas County, Rockport Fulton Days, and that was fun. There was quite a, quite a turnout. I know we had department heads, and a lot of regular citizens, and lots of folks were in attendance, so, so if you ever get a chance to go out there, it is a lot of fun. Today, I attended the Chamber Luncheon, and we got some news at the luncheon that is going to be, I mean, it's great for this individual, but it's going to be a bummer for the rest of us as far as the working relationship between, the existing working relationship between the city and the, the Rockport Fulton Chamber of Commerce. Diane Probst has announced her resignation. She will be greatly missed. Oh, not resignation, retirement, excuse me, or retirement, yeah.
Can I ask her?
Oh, yeah, well, don't, I know, I know the, the newspaper guy, he can fix it. But the, we're going to miss her terrific, I mean, it's going to be a tremendous miss. She's still going to be around. She's done such a tremendous job for this entire community for so many years. We owe her debt of thanks. But one thing I know about Diane is she's going to make sure that her replacement is going to be just as good as she is, so I'm not too worried about missing anything there. Looking forward to that announcement sometime. And then, one last quick little story. You know, people call me at all times, day or night, middle of night, weekends are always the fun phone call. I got a phone call Saturday from a really good friend of mine that lives in Austin. He's got a place here. He's had a place here for years, and he's just adopted Rockport. He's here very active, but he's always behind the scenes and very quiet. He, he works in the Capitol. Great resource for, for the city of Rockport, especially post-Harvey. He has relationships with the governor's office, with all the different commissioners. He's introduced me to so many people over the years that I've been able to work quietly in the background. Even has an office across the street from the Capitol he lets me park in. If, when I was going to Austin once a month before COVID, that was, that's a bonus if you ever tried to park in, at the Capitol. And had an office set up for me. I was able to use the telephone, was able to meet people there, just did a great job. Well, I got a phone call. He says, and he calls me Mary, refuses to call me Patty. Says, I was driving from the valley, coming to Rockport to go, stay at the condo for, just for the day, and I wanted to go to the Nautical Flea Market. And when I turned off of Business 35 South on the market, I looked in my rearview mirror, and the lights were on. And my first panic is like, I've had dozens of these phone calls. How do I tell this guy I can't help him? Right? So I'm starting my usual, well, you know, I promise you'll never get a ticket in Rockport that you don't deserve, so. But I let him go on and on. He says, well, no, just stop. He says, let me, let me finish. I said, well, what did you do? He said, don't know. Opened the windows, I sat there. The officer came up, very professional, very polite, asked me for my license, proof of insurance registration, he says, and I provided all that to him, and he asked me what I was doing here. And I said, well, you know, come to check my place and go to the Nautical Flea Market. And he asked me a few more questions, and I'm sitting there thinking, please don't tell... And he asked me a few more questions, and I'm sitting there thinking, "Please don't tell him you know me." He, he said, "I, I never even said anything." He said, "He went back to the car, came back, gave me my license, said, 'Sir, have a great day and just be a little more careful when you come back home, when, when you're, you're home here in Rockport.'" And I'm standing there on the telephone going like, "Well, that's not how I thought that was going to go." Because that's not how they usually go. Usually, I get all kinds of, uh, well, anyway. So I just wanted to let Chief Stevens know that, uh, Lieutenant Rollins did a phenomenal job as an ambassador for the city of Rockport with a guy that's extremely influential. He was here a couple of weeks ago with, uh, former Speaker of the House Strauss and, and some other folks here. He calls me whenever he's in town, and I thought that was, it was a phone call that turned out way better than I thought. But anyway, thank you to you and David. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The time is 7:18, and we're adjourned.
Mayor, Council, I, I believe the volunteer fire department wants a photo op of you guys.
So we want to stick around for the, the fire department. We don't want any cops in this shot either, do we?